Even though it's past. Uh, got to stay. I didn't wear a tie.
I like the flag. I'm just like, why is anyone here?
He's gonna be late and Anthony's in at work tonight. So I'll now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 4:02 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'll have our coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon, Mr. Rollins, Mr. Scavano.
Here.
Mrs. McCullough.
Here.
Mr. Segal.
Here.
Mr. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Scabado. With five present, two absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you, and we will now begin the strategic update portion of our meeting. Dr. Munson, are you doing the introduction or Dr. Jarrett?
Okay. I'm gonna do the introduction to the introduction.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank the Board for getting here extra early tonight. This is part of a new protocol that we're doing where we're looking at 90-day updates for our work. We're on a journey of continuous improvement and evidence-based leadership, and this is gonna be a very in-depth look at the work we've done on our five goals over the first 90 days of the year, and then we'll be segueing into our traditional board meeting. So I want to turn it over to Dr. Kelly Munson, who has helped lead and facilitate the work with our Cabinet, and she will introduce our expert that's going to help us also with talking about our first employee engagement survey data of the year as well. So thank you for your extra time and attention, and we're looking forward to doing this work together. Dr. Munson?
Good evening, and again, thank you so much for your time this evening. As Dr. Jarrett said, today is our first 90-day update on our strategic plan. As you recall, in the spring and the fall, we really wanted to give a more timely and readily available update on the specific components of our strategic plan that we're now referring to as our balance scorecard. So if you recall, those are the five very specific areas, one within each of our strategic goals, that we've committed to this year with very small benchmarks that we hope to obtain by the end of this school year. So by the end of today, the outcomes that we want to accomplish is for you to have an understanding of the trends from our district-wide engagement survey, and I'll explain a little bit more of what that presentation will look like. In addition, we want you to have an awareness of our progress monitoring towards these balance scorecard benchmarks, and that will be a secondary presentation, which will emphasize, again, those five strategic areas. What we're gonna begin today is we've invited onsite our third-party partner, Dr. David Blakelock, who I'll introduce in a moment. What, if you recall back in the spring and again in the fall, and through our two-day, very intensive retreat with Cabinet in the summer, we really wanted to gain a better understanding of the engagement of our staff across our organization. This was in Goal Three, optimal climate, to really develop a baseline in order for us to really move forward with an action plan on further engaging our staff. In order to do that, we decided to work with our third-party consultant, K-12 Insight, who also works with us throughout our organization with Let's Talk. So we've been working with them over the last three years. They've also assisted with our HR survey that we gave last year, also aligned to our strategic plan. I really wanted to emphasize that the development of this particular survey was done in conjunction with several individuals across our organization. For example, this secondary part of our engagement survey was done in conjunction and collaboration with our REA leadership, Paul Goddard and Dawn Graft. We really worked together to ensure that our engagement survey both really gave us an overview and a benchmark of our overall engagement, but that we also utilized the information that we've gathered in the past on principal trust and satisfaction. So we worked in collaboration with K-12 Insight to develop this tool, which encompassed both sides of our engagement. We really wanted to utilize this, though, and develop this as a system of progress to turn data into action. So you do have in front of you something that I handed out to give you an idea of the timeline that we've followed during this process. We, again, didn't want to give a survey without having a true hands-on process for gathering the information, analyzing the information, dissegregating it, but most importantly, doing something with the data. So we made a commitment to the staff that we truly wanted their feedback and input, and as a result, we made a commitment to action plan, which we're gonna talk about after our presentation today, in order to drive change based on their feedback. So after our presentation, I'm going to come back up and talk a little bit about our action plan that Cabinet has developed in order to truly take the feedback from our organization and try to change and really, truly, hopefully, make an impact in our culture through this engagement survey. So we want to really utilize that, again, to drive, to take data and really create action. So again, we'll come back to the timeline that you have in front of you in a bit, but without delay, I really wanted to invite our partner from K-12 Insight to give you a true in-depth understanding of our district-wide results. Tonight, you're going to see a comprehensive report of our engagement survey, which includes all of the data points from our engagement survey component. Later this week, you will receive a secondary report, which will be a more comprehensive report with all of the data points, and will also include in writing our commitment to following through and action planning on this specific report from the Cabinet's perspective. So I want to invite Dr. David Blakelock, who, again, is our partner from K-12 Insight, and he's going to walk you through all of the components of our engagement survey tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Munson. Good afternoon, everyone. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, to present the results, and kind of walk through what we found in our employee engagement survey. First, as Dr. Munson mentioned, my name is David Blakelock. I'm from the Senior Director of Research at K-12 Insight. K-12 Insight works with about 200 districts across the country doing stakeholder engagement survey work, as well as Let's Talk. I work primarily in the Midwest, where I work with about 50 districts, as far west as Nebraska, as far east as Ohio, throughout that Midwest region. Prior to doing this work, I was actually a special educator for about 16 years, and so when I come to this work, I come to it with the lens of an educator and a former educational administrator as well. So as we move forward with this presentation, the first thing we want to do is we want to define employee engagement. And as you can see in the first sentence there, engagement is the connection that individuals have with their profession in general and their current jobs in particular. The best way that I can describe how we do the engagement is to jump forward to our engagement tree here. You'll see here engagement being this kind of the tree of itself, and the drivers underneath it, the work environment, the feedback and recognition, the communication, the leadership, the shared values, and the career growth and training opportunities. Those are the roots that drive engagement so that you can see the fruit that they bear with pride, growth, accomplishment across the top there. So that's the conceptual framework that we're working with as far as measuring engagement itself and the factors that influence engagement, which we'll talk about in just a few minutes. As we see the survey goals, we were here to measure the level of engagement of Rockford Public Schools 205 employees, classify employees as highly engaged, engaged, or less engaged, and identify areas where employee engagement can be improved. We had the survey open. We sent out three reminders. It was open from September 27th to October 11th. We sent out three reminders to non-participants. One of the things we were doing is we were tracking participation very closely to ensure that we had as much participation as possible and to identify areas where we could make sure participation could be increased. So one thing that is important to notice is that we did have a fairly robust participation here. Our company threshold is typically to try to get 50% participation. We were able to beat that for this particular one. However, one thing to note is that because it is a census sample as opposed to a random sample, the results may not necessarily be generalizable. However, they do give a good picture of a good group of what your district employees feel, and given the size of the sample itself, we can probably take a look to assume that it is somewhat representative of what others feel across the district. So study design, it's broken into several components. The first series of questions is nine questions that measure overall engagement itself. Each individual's responses are averaged based on a weighted score assigned to the survey options. So it's a Likert scale, a five-point Likert scale, that runs from strongly agree, or one point, to strongly, I'm sorry, strongly agree, five points, to strongly disagree at one point. And so we define, based on our metrics, what highly engaged, engaged, and less engaged mean. Everyone with an average score above 4.5 is considered to be highly engaged. Those between 3.5 and 4.5 are considered to be engaged, and those below a 3.5 are considered to be less engaged. We've got the drivers lifted there as well, and we did have some additional demographic questions that we pre-populated to be able to cut the data in a variety of different ways. So we have our executive summary here as far as what we found. The big piece is that we found 77% staff members are engaged or highly engaged. When we look at it in segments, those who have worked for the district less than a year are, 90% of them are engaged or highly engaged. This is fairly typical with what we see doing the survey across the country. We see that kind of start to drop off as time goes on as far as work with the district. What we also see is that the lowest percentage of engaged or highly engaged staff are at those that have worked for the district for 21 to 25 years. Shared value dimension had the highest weighted score, and the feedback and recognition one had the lowest weighted score. The interactions with principals or direct supervisors were frequently identified as positive areas. They were a place where engagement is contributing to positive engagement, and again, I'll speak to that in a few more moments when I get to those particular slides. When we look at the interaction as far as the ability to improve, district employees being able to improve performance, that was kind of a low point, 57% of staff members agreeing or strongly agreeing. And then we see the low point on the survey as far as being 21% of staff members agreeing or strongly agreeing that morale is high in the district, and only 51% agreeing or strongly agreeing that morale is high in their school department. The other piece is going to be the understanding of professional needs, which, again, we will speak to in just a moment. So we look at participation here. We sent out 3,959 survey invitations. We received 2,260 responses for a response rate of 57%. When we look at the literature for what would be considered a representative sample of 3,959 responses, it's a population of 500 with point plus three or minus margin error on an 80/20 split survey, which is what this is. It's a one out of five chance of an option being picked. As we can see here, our biggest participation group was the classroom teachers at 62% of the total survey population, as well as the lowest one being bus drivers, building and maintenance, and transportation, and only 3% as well as the central office administrator. You'll see the asterisks there next to certified staff. That's just defined there on the bottom as to which positions that particular group consists of. So now let's look at overall engagement. When we look at the individual items, we look at it as far as employee engagement. Sir?
When would you like questions?
If we could take them at the end?
All right.
That'd be fantastic.
Okay, thanks.
So I want to kind of define what this slide is, because we see it throughout the series of the entire report. So the top green bar there is our benchmark. It is a weighted benchmark based on eight districts across the country, varying size. And so we weight based on district size or participation rate so that we don't have the larger districts diluting the data of the smaller districts. Below that is RPS 205, Rockford Public Schools 205. That is the raw weighted average. So if we took a numerical average of each item, based on that weighting values with the five-point Likert scale I mentioned earlier, you will see that it is 3.84 for the first item there. So that's the average. The yellow bar, or gold bar, is actually a weighting perspective that we added to the Rockford Public Schools 205 segment of the survey. And what that is, is it equalizes the participation group, the different groups, based on position type. So you'll see here, you have 1,398 classroom teachers take the survey, and the bus drivers, building, and maintenance, and transportation, only 64 took it. So what we see in the blue bar is a very heavy weight of the classroom teachers. What the yellow bar does is it equalizes that. It underweights the classroom teachers, and it overweight that last group, the bus drivers, and the transportation group, to give them equal say, and as you can see, it kind of pulls the numbers up a little bit. But it's basically to give equal weight to the different position types. You'll see some more of this here with the Rockford Public Schools 205 compared to the And then we get into the engagement score itself. In this case, we saw 22% being highly engaged, 55% being engaged, and 23% being less engaged. A question I often get when we look at these sort of data is, how do we compare to other districts? And when we look at the benchmark, it's very difficult to tell because, again, the weighting action with the percentages. However, we do break the benchmark data into different categories, and so within our categories, we have three medium-sized districts, which is districts between 10,000 and 30,000 students, which is where Rockford Public Schools falls. And so for that one, the medium districts have 38% are highly engaged, 41% are engaged, and 20% are less engaged. Now, one thing to take into account is that this is a concept that we have defined as far as what these categorizations are. So when we look at the next threshold up, the next group up, of 30,000 to 80,000, which is what we consider to be a large district, where you're kind of right on the bubble, what we see there is that the large districts, 29% are highly engaged, 45% are engaged, and 26% are less engaged. So it's something to take into account as you look at this, because you're kind of between those two, where your data fall on that. So then we look at the engagement drivers, and what this is, is the dimension level score. And so as we look at these, you see the shared values being the highest one at 3.84, feedback and recognition at 3.29. Again, when we look at the comparison to the medium and the large districts, shared values for medium is 3.99, for large is 3.84. Work environment is going to be 3.73 for medium-sized districts and 3.6 for large districts. Communications is going to be 3.73 for medium-sized districts and 3.61 for large districts. Leadership, 3.74 for medium, 3.61 for large. And then career growth and training is going to be 3.71 for medium districts, 3.61 for large, feedback and recognition, 3.51 for medium, 3.40 for large. So it's a lot of numbers to put there, but it's to kind of give you some context of where you sit at the dimension level within the different districts that we benchmark against. And so here we have all of the data kind of broken down by weighted score based on the model that we talked about before, where you've got the RPS 205 raw and then the RPS 205 weighted as compared to the benchmark. One of the themes that we kind of see consistently is that, as we kind of indicated in the executive summary, interactions with principals and direct supervisors tends to fare favorably well, the district leaders, not as well. So I'm gonna move through this section pretty quickly to get into the kind of what, what does it mean sort of slides of the presentation. And now we get into the focus areas. And how we organize this is based on two concepts, what the weighted score of a specific item is, again, at the raw level, and what the correlation that individual item has to engagement. So we end up with a distribution of weighted scores across all the items in the survey, and then we also end up with a distribution of correlations to engagement for each item. And so what we see here is to the left side, those that have a low engagement, low driver rating, and a higher, above, below the median driver rating, and above the median in correlation to engagement go in that yellow box. The above the median in driver rating and above the median in correlation go in the green box. Below the median in driver and below the median correlation go in the blue box in that upper right-hand quadrant there, and then above the median in driver but below the median correlation go in that bottom right-hand quadrant right there. And so how that shakes out is that the yellow, which, again, is below the median in driver rating but above the median in correlation, are those areas that you really want to work on. These are the items that are really having a strong impact on bringing engagement down. And so these are kind of the areas that you want to focus on to kind of try to show some improvement with and do what you can to improve. The green ones, the continuing positive actions, these are above the median in driver rating and above the median correlation. These are the things that are going well. What I've seen with a lot of the districts I've worked with across the country is that they only want to focus in on the bad stuff to fix it, but oftentimes, in the spirit of school improvement, we forget to look at what's going well. And so we start dropping those balls to focus in on what's not going well, and pretty soon the things that are having a positive contribution start becoming the things that are having a negative contribution because they're not being focused on. So that's why we offer that balanced approach between what is positive and where the room for improvement is. The other thing is going to be, this is going to be, again, the continuing positive actions, so above the median in driver rating, below the median in correlation, and then finally, we have above the median or below the median in driver rating and below the median in So these are the ways to kind of really flush the data out for what the areas are that you really want to focus in on and what you want to continue doing well. We now want to take a look at engagement by demographics. And so when you take a look at these, these are more categorical. Each of the schools that we talked about, that we, each school, received their own report that was very similar to this. So when you see those four quadrants there, it is data that is specific to that school, because what may need be improved in one school may not necessarily be to the other. So each school is using its own data and its own self-contained system to work with, not just based off the district report, but based on how the school performs relative to itself. We look at the engagement by school level and department, and so we can break this down by school level, as well as the different departments across the district right there. Special Programs has the lowest less engaged compared to the middle schools, or I mean, excuse me, the Sterling Holly Center, which has the highest percentage of less engaged. One thing to note is the difference is an N across the different groups there, so each one's a little bit more sensitive, the Sterling Holly being a little more sensitive because the N is so small. When we look at engagement by years of service, we spoke about this earlier, where the less than one year and the one to two years typically fairly engaged, what we usually see is a kind of a decrease from three to five years on down. However, what we typically see is a little bit more of a boomerang, a comeback at 16 to 20 years, where people start being, the engagement level's starting to increase again as well. When we look at engagement by role, we want to think about this in the context of the combined highly engaged and engaged. So we look at classroom teacher in this case, which is going to be 76% engaged or highly engaged, as opposed to building administrators, where you have 89% engaged or highly engaged. And then we had some additional questions related to verbatim responses. So the first question in the survey is what word best describes how you feel about your work? And this is a word cloud based on, based on those results. To give you some context, in this case, overwhelmed was mentioned 185 times. Hopeful, which is on there somewhere, is really, if it's just to the right of the D and frustrated, was 13 times. So it gives you a sense of the scale of discrepancy between those two. We then disaggregated this based on engagement level. So when we look at the highly engaged staff, you know, great stands out. These are the staff that are really engaged. And so in this case, the context is great, which is 30 responses, and supported, which is just to the right of the top of the T there, is going to be seven responses. We then get into the just engaged staff, and in this case, the overwhelmed is 96 responses. We then get into the just engaged staff. In this case, the overwhelmed is 96 responses. And the interesting, which is on there somewhere, is going to be 11 responses. And finally, the less engaged, overwhelmed is 71, and discouraged is going to be five responses. That is the end of the presentation right there. I understand that there's going to be some questions, so I'd like to open the floor to that now.
Mr. Rollins, you want to go first?
Sure. I don't know if this is really a question, it's more of a comment. So the overall participation rate was 57%, but our largest group, which is the teachers, it was 72%. So if they were 72%, but the overall participation rate was 57%, doesn't that mean we had a really low participation rate for the other groups?
You had a lower participation rate for some of the other groups, yes, that is correct. However, one thing to keep in mind is that, you know, when you look at the proportion of total responses, your classroom teachers, you know, of 3,959 represent roughly 2,000. So we did have lower, lower participation from other groups, but we did try to monitor that and probe that as much as we possibly could to encourage participation.
I assume you have somewhere what the participation rates are for the other groups?
Correct.
Can you just give me a synopsis of what they look like?
Off the top of my head, I do not have them. But that is something I can send to the board later.
And when you say that you are happy to get a 50% participation rate, is that for engagement surveys or surveys in general?
So 50% participation is what we are typically looking for, for surveys of staff members within a district.
For engagement surveys or just surveys in general?
Surveys in general.
Do you draw any conclusions on engagement from people who don't participate?
They tend to be less engaged, so that these would be kind of skewed positive.
All right, thanks.
I have two questions. One is the, how frequently will, and these are my, maybe Dr. Munson questions. How frequently will follow-up surveys be done annually, every other year or something? I wasn't sure about that. The other question is about shared, shared values. And I guess, since we just kind of identified what our values are, I mean, how do we know that they're shared by others, I guess?
And while she answers that question, I will pull the data requested by Mr. Rollins.
Okay.
In response to your first question, we committed to giving this survey now and again in the fall. So we have an opportunity to input and do some things differently to see if we make an impact and then give this exact same survey to our employees this time next year.
Next fall.
Yeah. Right now, we're opening our window, the 15th opens the window for the Five Essentials survey, but that survey will be focused on parents and students in the organization, not staff.
So the shared values, maybe you don't have to have them identified as to what they are.
Actually, the, right now, we're working on a communication plan to disseminate and discuss our values as an organization. But that really does tie into the results of this survey. And so that is, did come up in, we had a retreat on Monday, and then we actually had a presentation the previous Monday from K-12 Insight on our survey results. And that is something that we're contemplating in response to having a very clear set of identified values for our organization. So that will be part of our response.
Yeah, I just would comment that, you know, I'm pleased with the response rate and I'm pleased with the scores for the principals. I think there is a positive message in there that there's a good connection between our staff and the principals and their buildings.
We're pleased as well. Just to give context, we have survey fatigue in our district. So when we gave our engage, or we gave our survey last year for HR, and we actually extended the window twice, we still only had a 29% response rate. So we're very excited about the response rate for this particular survey. And as you can see from the timeline, we did a lot of communication and support to ensure that we really truly solicited the feedback from our organization. And there are some areas, such as bus drivers, who don't have general access to their emails or to computers on a regular basis. So we did anticipate some of our groups were going to be lower.
Mr. Connor, I'll let you go next.
Actually, David.
Mr. Segal? If I may, if I may answer Mr. Rollins's question really quickly, just so that he has that. So when we look at the participation rate, the building administrators was 85%. Bus drivers category right there was 19%. The central office administrator was 92%. The central office staff was 67%. The classroom teachers was 82%. Certified staff was 37%. And the pairs group there, the paraprofessionals group there was 29%. A total participation rate of 57%.
And we're going to be, we'll have a board update that will include the comprehensive survey. We will also include those numbers and any other questions that you have in addition to our action plan in that report that's going to be coming up.
Okay. Thank you for finding that. Mr. Segal?
Have you found in other districts that the survey is affected by teacher negotiations, both in response rate and in the actual responses themselves from one survey to the next, where maybe the next survey is given when there is actually a contract and not a negotiation?
So the only context I can provide in the, relative to staff involvement or staff issues that may be going on is that we had a district who did this. They had actually part of an agreement as part of a bond campaign, agreed to a pay, a pay freeze for a couple of years as part of the district getting their fiscal house in order. And what we found in that case is that participation was also very good there. Again, with the current collective bargaining issues you're having right now, you had a very strong participation rate from your, from your classroom teachers who are being impacted on that. You know, I would have anticipated that it would have been much lower than it was, but clearly they came out based on the support of the, of REA kind of being in collaboration as far as the survey development and how the data were going to be used. So I would say that the collective bargaining issue aside, the contract negotiation aside, people recognize, the classroom teachers recognize this as an opportunity to be able to provide meaningful feedback to help drive improvement independent of the contract negotiation.
Mr. Connor?
Excuse me. In terms of timing, one of my questions is going to be about the fall. And let me just say that having done similar things in corporate life, we are often very careful about what time of the year. My example is if, if you pay out bonuses in February, if you survey people in March, you're probably going to get some pretty good results. And likewise, other events. So did we kind of think about the calendar and we chose essentially late September, October purposely for some particular reason?
So there was discussion during the development of the center survey window itself when I came to, when, when folks from, representatives from my company came to meet with Cabinet in late May, early June. And the idea was, you know, everyone comes back from summer break and there's that honeymoon period. And so we tried to gauge the survey for when the window opened to be after that honeymoon period was over. So we were trying to be very thoughtful as far as when it is. The other piece to keep in mind, too, is that if you're going to benchmark and trend against yourself, you know, this is, you're going to want to set your benchmark. That becomes, that, that survey window becomes very important to mirror the same time a year from then. Because whatever time of year factors you have that might be confounding your results, those will be the same things going on the following year as well.
So I guess, so in this, from K-12's standpoint, is it typical that districts, I mean, I'd be particularly interested in large, but any districts tend to pick that same timeframe?
The answer to that question is yes. So our typical window that we recommend for this survey is between beginning of October and maybe, you know, beginning of March. So you're not pushing too close up against spring break, but usually in that window. So it is at the beginning of that window, but it is when the, within the window of when we recommend running the survey.
So is that typical?
Typical is usually, again, in that range from October to early March.
So it's a true dispersion over that range? It's not, doesn't it, I would think it would tend to be bunched, but?
Yeah, it's, it's not necessarily bunched. There, there are districts who prefer to do it in the fall to try to get it. Because, because the other issue is, as Dr. Munson referenced, you have a lot of survey fatigue going. So it's a matter of trying to time your survey so you're not stacking your surveys one upon the other. And so a lot of districts we work with will be doing four or five surveys with us throughout the year. And so actually, employee engagement is one that typically does get pulled into the fall time period for that reason, is to be able to distribute a little later on. We usually try to stay away from doing surveys between like Thanksgiving and the winter holiday, those sorts of things. So it is kind of within the window of what we see.
So we have a relatively standard timeframe, which we would then tend to do on an annual basis. Is there going to be any further analysis, kind of, and whether it's fair or not? The analogy that comes to my mind is when you do the Gallup engagements, there's really a lot of underlying analysis. I mean, you've got it in some of the charts where you say, hey, you know, these are correlated from the driver's side and impact and so forth. But what they'll typically do, and I'm not saying this is what you have to do, but there'll be some analysis that says, you know, companies who are in the top 10% tend to exhibit this and, you know, our observation is blah, 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 blah. And even though it's fairly pro forma from Gallup, I was wondering if there's going to be maybe some more analysis from K-12 to comment on it. You know, I mean, I think the one thing I will comment on is typically, again, when I've engaged private companies, one of the value adds is you look and you say, okay, so how does this fit? And there's some at least guidance or advisory section to it. So I don't know if we're going to do that, but that would be something just from my standpoint. Because sometimes the numbers, as you said, you have a range and you try to wait for it and all the rest. But if you've done this before, I think having that analysis would be pretty helpful.
So it's a good question. And so where we are in the analysis is that we have broken this data apart a variety of different ways and presented it back to the district to share, to kind of look through and work through. Schools are working at their, on their own individual data as well. Because again, this is the whole. And so we want to kind of take a look at the, the parts of it itself. And so the schools are looking at their own individual data as well. But we can look across for specific themes that we're seeing of what is performing well as far as, as compared to what is, what is not performing as well. The other thing we talked about doing an analysis of when we get a little further in the spring is actually looking at how the different schools, what their engagement levels, how that correlates with certain achievement data as well, to kind of take a look at that as well.
That was partly where I was headed, too, is if there's other correlation factors, I think, at least.
And Dr. Munson and I have been in conversation about that, of how we can pull in other external observable data to tie in with this to kind of drive it as well.
So when can we expect some kind of either schedule or plan around that?
As far as the disaggregation of data, we do have other reports that we can share. And so I'm happy to share, you know, share any of that breakdown. Some of it you'll receive in the comprehensive report this week. As far as the correlational data, we really wanted to see a correlation between engagement and MAP scores since we're focusing on growth this year. But because we really have a fall baseline, we want to wait till spring. So we have that fall to spring data and then really compare the, or try to do a correlational report at that time.
Okay. And then do I assume next year, you could go back for a year and do a similar, except you'd have the entire year and correlate the results? I think the only other thing I'd ask is if there's something where you have districts where you know, you know, demographically, financially, whatever the criteria is, that they're enough kind of like us. Obviously, we've done this before when we've looked at other kinds of criteria, you know, or factors, you know, salaries or what have you. I think this would be helpful to target some of those, especially if there's a range. Because the ones that are more relevant from my point of view would probably have more to tell us in terms of the comparatives.
So to that point, we are, this past year was our first benchmark report coming out. And so we've had another year to build, to deepen that pool of districts that are in the benchmark so that we can separate and disaggregate a little bit more, other than just by district size, so that folks can get a good understanding of, you know, is it a suburban, urban, dense, population density, those sorts of things. We want to have, try to have at least two or three in a given quadrant or a given cell to make those comparisons. And so like I said, as we deepen our pool, we'll have a better understanding, better ability to have those comparisons and be more robust.
Okay, thanks.
Any others? I have one more question for Dave.
Yes, sir.
The most important part of, and reason for doing this is so that you're going to have action plans to, to work on areas to improve and to celebrate those that you're doing really well on. But let's take, for example, our lowest feedbacks, score was on recognition and feedback or whatever. Does your company then come back to our administrative team and say, we have found that other school districts that scored low in recognition and feedback did this, steps A, B, and C, tactical plans or whatever, and they were successful in raising that score level? So I guess, do you provide that or do we just start from scratch and try to figure it out on our own?
So that's a great question. And that's one thing that we've actually been working on developing. And so, yeah, when you look at the benchmark, particularly the, from, from just the, from the dimension level, you've got, you know, shared values being 3.99, feedback and recognition being 3.51. So it's the lowest, it's always the lowest performing one about the feedback and recognition. I was actually doing focus groups on it in a district on this very issue last week, somewhere in the Midwest. So what we actually have been working on developing is actually literature reviews of best practices so that we can provide that as part of our reports as well to incorporate so that it's not just anecdotally from districts that we have kind of talked to and what we've seen work has, to the point that was just made, districts can be very different, but what we've actually seen as evidence-based as evidence in the literature.
Any others?
Okay.
And I think we're going to hear about action plans or something.
And back to that question as well. We've done our own research and some of the benchmark and partnerships that we've made with other districts. And even as recent as last week, I engaged in a conversation with our Park District here in Rockford, just to see some things that they've done after, you know, really having a similar survey and shared that information with the Cabinet when we were developing our action plan. So we are constantly benchmarking and networking with other districts to see what they're doing in districts that are like us, but also higher performing districts, just to see what best practices are out there. So we continue those partnerships. So now the important conversation is about so what? What are we going to do with this data? And how are we going to drive change now that we have a better understanding of engagement as a whole? One of the things that you'll see mentioned throughout the timeline is we invited K-12 Insight with us to partner on the development of a system to take our feedback and make it meaningful. Part of what we did with that is we asked all schools to take their data and develop and identify one area of improvement and then utilize that to action plan and drive change with their staff. We did the same thing with Cabinet. So after hearing a deep conversation about our results as a district, we sat and had a retreat this Monday, and we identified some early starts, some things that we believe we can do. So I just want to run through those with you briefly. Again, I'm just discussing this at this point, but I will put this in writing and include it with our comprehensive report when we send that to you later this week. So based on the data, we identified three areas of focus. And the direct questions that came from the survey were that district leaders understand my professional needs, district leaders' actions are consistent with their words, and district leaders encourage employees to share ideas to improve, to improve performance. And we felt all of those, as we were having this deep discussion, we realized we were talking about all three. And the assumption is that if we can improve these areas, we will then increase morale and we will develop within these conversations a better recognition program throughout our district. One of the key components of this is to open up the conversation to the staff. So in addition to opening up the conversation, we have some key points, some key things that we want to do, and we'll share those with you briefly now. One of the things we're going to do is in our continued partnership with K-12 Insight, we're actually going to establish an additional Let's Talk landing page, which will allow a more specific gathering of feedback on policy decisions in ways to improve the district for all employees. So we want to have a specific page so that we can share sort of two-way conversation about our feedback and different policy decisions. In addition, we've started what we call rounding, which is a specific conversation that we've talked about in other strategic updates. And again, this is something that Dr. Jarrett has committed to, as have we, and then our departments have committed to it as well. But we want to extend that rounding, not just to our own teams and our departments, but also to schools. And then also have four critical questions that we want to ask across our organization in different committees, different departments, and other avenues throughout our district to gather feedback, to come back to the table, and have some thematic discussions on how to improve engagement. In addition to that, we really want to take that rounding and have sort of a virtual view of it. And one way to do that is to really solicit input from employees on a larger scale to increase, again, increase their involvement on policy and decision-making. And we can also do that through Let's Talk. So we can create an avenue and a venue for individuals to share feedback, ask questions, and then we can, again, respond. And we can even solicit that by sending random employees throughout the district, specific questions before we make decisions, to solicit feedback to ensure we're listening to all of our stakeholders. In addition to that, we already have our Downtown Leadership Club, and we really want to emphasize that group. We have about 300 people who are in this building that we want to include on decision-making in addition to the rest of the employees in our organization. So we really want to use them as a springboard to cascade our values and solicit feedback. That is an avenue that we have developed that we want to continue to broaden. We also have started a pilot of what we call Living the Vision. Living the Vision statements is when we identify other staff members that are truly doing things to demonstrate that they are living they are living our vision of being the first choice for all families. We also have shout-outs of recognition at our downtown leadership club. What we want to do with that is extend that beyond this building and do this throughout our organization to expand on our different recognition programs. Also, we really want to take a deep dive and review our current collaborative structures to consider revisions to ensure that all of our stakeholders throughout our organization are involved in the decision-making and that communication strands are open to all. We talk a lot in our strategic updates about the cascading of information. We want to ensure that the decisions we are considering here in district office, especially at the board and cabinet level, truly cascade through our organization down to the classroom and across all employee constituents. So we want to ensure that the structure that we have in place is allowing for that streamlined conversation. So we're going to have a deep dive, and we're going to include several stakeholders, including REA, in that discussion to ensure that we truly have a system and structure in place to solicit this feedback. Again, this is our first dive in this conversation, but we really wanted to be thoughtful about putting something into place now to demonstrate that we have heard our employees and we recognize we have areas to improve. And so these are some of the things that we are going to start. Some we have already started and we're going to expand. Some are new ideas that we know we can put into place now. And these, again, really in retrospect, to really look at our goal three, this is our heavy emphasis this year to really improve the climate of our district. So any questions or comments about our next steps? Again, I will take all of this, I will put it in writing for you and attach, again, our comprehensive report and include that information for you in writing. Any other questions?
Dr. Jarrett?
Here we go. Just an example, you know, Earl and I have been going to schools for the last four years, starting on our fifth year, and we started, and just this gives you an idea of how rounding changes the conversation a little bit. For the first four years, what we would do is ask the question, hey, what do you want to talk about? What's in your mind? This year, we've tweaked that with three general rounding questions. And I'm upfront with the faculty groups that I speak with, that these are going to be the three questions on the front end. But we start with, what are you working on? What are things that you're proud of in your building? Then we slide into challenges. What are the challenges that you're facing? And then we close with, who do you want to give recognition to in your building or outside of your building? One of the things the survey data will do to inject into that, we're about 12 visits into our year, is now moving forward, we will begin the process of looking, of asking the faculty. One of the things we learned from the district survey is there was a real gap or concern that district leaders don't really understand my professional needs. Can you tell me what it would look like if the district did a better job of understanding my professional, your professional needs? And Earl will be there to take down that feedback, will be there to listen. I think it's really important that we're continuing to evolving existing processes and protocols and making those better. At some point, we're already spending a lot of time talking to people. So the survey data will allow us, along with rounding and some of those really common discipline questions and approaches that we're taking, to get more out of the time we're already spending engaging with groups out in the schools or departments or with individuals. And we're also really working to extend that reach beyond, you know, my visits and my rounding. You'll see on the scorecard that we're also committing and monitoring that cabinet members are doing that with their teams and with other groups as well. So just a tangible example to hook to what one of those action steps is starting to look like and look differently in the buildings.
In addition to that, one thing that was exciting is after we did our Making Feedback Matter training to establish a system for sharing this information, I was able to go in front of all of the principals and disseminate that training so that we are all really looking at the data in a similar way. And what's exciting for me is a lot of the principals have reached out to share the conversations that they're happening, having at the building level, and they're fantastic. We're talking about data, we're talking about improvement, and we're talking about systematically changing our culture. So some really great conversations have come out of this data as well. Heimi, did you have a question?
Yeah, a quick one. And maybe not necessarily, it has to be answered here, but just when we get the report. Interested in, when it comes to rounding, what part of the process allows for candid feedback, and maybe not necessarily anonymous, but candid feedback from everyone at all levels without fear of retribution? That's one of the things I'm interested in.
I mean, hearts are getting in the butt. Yeah, it's struggling. You know, I think that's a really important part of the process. The type of rounding I described is very much meant to be a two-way, very public conversation. So obviously, there would be limitations to what individuals would say. One of the things we have built into Let's Talk and with the new Let's Talk landing page, we'll call for very specific feedback that can be by design anonymous. I think the very act of doing the survey the way we did, there was a ton of conversation about, hey, we had a whole public comment section to that as well as the survey data that really encourages people to be candid in their feedback. So those are two things that are immediately in place. And we'll certainly look at other avenues to ensure that people feel comfortable really, really being candid about what they want to see improved. There, because we do realize there are limits to what folks will say in front of their peers with the superintendent and the chief of communications in the room. Although you'll be surprised at how candid they really will be, particularly in the buildings.
Okay, great job.
Thank you.
Good start.
Great. So I'm actually going to officially conclude this part of our presentation, but I will ask Dr. Blake Clark to remain in case you have questions beyond. But I do want to shift then into the second component of our presentation today, and that is, again, to provide you with our 90-day strategic update. So again, the focus for today really is on Dr. Jarrett's scorecard, which we built in the spring, reviewed in the summer, and then really started to have a deeper discussion in the fall. So this today is going to provide you with a very specific update on those five core goals. So I have given you a copy of Dr. Jarrett's updated scorecard with specific metrics. And again, that will be reflective today on our current information and data. Some of the information that you're going to see today, you have seen, this is a duplicate of information, such as Park scores, and you've seen them in different forums, such as the board reports. However, we really wanted to give you a comprehensive overview of our five strategic areas. This will, again, allow for a richer discussion since we are here together for that purpose. So what I want to do in introducing the strategic update is we are going to go goal by goal. Again, we've covered most of Goal Three through Dr. Blaycock's presentation today and through our engagement survey action planning. But we want to start back on Goal One and really emphasize the specific areas and data sets that we have for you today. So I'm actually going to invite Heidi Detman up here to begin our strategic update on Goal One.
Okay, good evening. I'll start us off with Goal One, and I'm going to provide first just a reminder of the metrics that are on Dr. Jarrett's scorecard for the 90-day update. So I'm going to begin with our Early Learning Scale metric, and that's for our youngest learners. Then I'll lead us through MAP, and we'll be looking at national percentiles when we look at MAP. And then I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Vosberg, who will lead us through freshman on track rate and also graduation rate. Okay. So first, let's start with the Early Learning Scale. Early Learning Scale, if you're not familiar, is an authentic observation-based assessment. What that means is that teachers are watching students as they learn, and they're recording their observations over a period of time. And this allows us, kind of like MAP, to identify students' progress toward meeting their goals and also to provide that in-time data to drive instruction. And so what you have in front of us, or in front of you, represents our four-year-olds enrolled in our early childhood program. And we chose two specific indicators. There are 10 different domains with multiple strands. We selected numbers and numerical operations and phonological awareness because that provides the most alignment with what we're dialed into for our early elementary learners as well. And what you can notice, if you look at the graphs or the chart in front of you, is that in the fall of 2016, both under numbers and numerical operations and under phonological awareness, we have the majority of our students scoring three or under. What we'd like to see is by the time our four-year-olds leave us, they're scoring in the four and five range. And so if you look, for example, at numbers and numerical operations, you can see that in zero, one, two, and three, that's where the majority of our students were. If you look in the next column, Spring 2017, and you look across four and five, you see that 27% and 34% of our students respectively have moved from not meeting to meeting. That's a great sign. And if you do the same thing then for phonological awareness, it's even starker. You can see that 49% of our students in the fall of 2016 entered at a Level One, and yet by the spring, they moved toward that benchmark of four or five by moving into 52% at the three and 35% respectively. You may be asking yourself, how is it possible that we had 0% of students scoring a two or a four? And it's how the rubric is set up. When there is only one strand, like there is on the rubric for phonological awareness, teachers always score on a zero, one, three, or five. The way we generate scores of two and four are when there are multiple strands under one particular domain. So because phonological awareness is a one-strand domain, all of the scores are zero, one, three, or five. And so here's where we are this year. This is our Fall 2017 baseline. And you can see that our numbers are very typical from what we saw last year. Last year, in numbers and numerical operations, we had 16%, I'm sorry, 17% of our students scoring a one. This year, we have 16%. Phonological awareness scoring a one. Last year, we had 49%. This year, 45%. So we can anticipate that we'll see some nice growth from zero, one, two, and three into levels four and five by the end of the year. Moving on to NWEA MAP, or Measures of Academic Progress, like Early Learning Scale, MAP provides us growth points. And in fact, it provides not only the district a way to look at student growth, but for each individual family and each individual child to set their own growth targets. And again, unlike Park, this provides us with real in-time data that can inform instructional decision-making. You've seen some of this data before. We presented you with the first three columns in our June update, and what I've done is just added a column for Fall of 2017. There are really just a few notable items that I'd like to draw your attention to. The first is that you may notice that second grade looks much higher. Last year, there was some discrepant test administration. NWEA MAP offers two different levels of assessment. Last year was MAP for primary grades, which is meant for students in kindergarten through second grade. And then they also offer MAP two through five. So there's an overlap at second grade. Some of our schools gave MAP primary, some of our schools gave MAP two through five. They are not different assessments. They are chunked differently for the children, and they provide scaffolds in the K through two, such as auditory support for students who need it. As soon as students demonstrate that they don't need it, as they take the adaptive assessment, the auditory support naturally falls off. This year, we ensured that every second grader took the MAP for primary grades. You can also see on the-
Mr. Rollins has a question.
Sure, go ahead.
What number actually is being reported here? Like a 40 in the fall of 2016 for kindergarten?
Oh, I apologize.
What does that mean?
National percentiles.
Of, translate that, finish a sentence. Percentile of what?
Sure. Are you looking at kindergarten 40?
Yeah, just as an example.
Fall 2016. So what that means is that in the fall of 2016, our kindergarteners came in at the 40th percentile nationally. By the spring administration, they were at the 33rd percentile nationally, which means they did not keep pace with their peers.
Okay.
And so we saw a drop of seven percentile points from the fall to the spring in terms of the nationally-normed data.
And, I mean, just so everyone understands, we're not asleep, that we're actually listening to all of this and looking at this. So that happened through last year, 4K through 4. We actually saw a decrease in performance of our nationally-normed, of the nationally-normed numbers.
We did.
For every grade.
Yes.
In addition, we saw kids coming in at lower and lower levels, grade after grade.
Yes.
Do we have an explanation for that? Do we have an action plan for that? Okay.
We do. Would you like me to elaborate on that now, or would you like that at the end?
We can wait till the end if we're going to talk about it at the end.
Sure, sounds good. Okay, so back to, I'll spend just a little bit of time here on reading achievement. You can see that that negative trend reverses by fifth grade, and then we see some higher numbers and a more positive change in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. On the next slide, we begin with math achievement. And again, this is national percentiles. This is where students came in in the fall, where they left in the spring, and then the overall change. And as Mr. Rollins noted, you can also see a rather low percentile on entry coming in at each grade level. We do see that trend of losing ground in K through 4, while we begin to pick up ground, though much more modestly in math, in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. I'll go ahead and hand it over to Dr. Vosberg unless you have any other questions about MAP or ELS specifically.
I did have a question specific to MAP. So MAP's sort of a leading indicator. It shows student growth, and, you know, what gets reported in the paper is the Park. So we've had these conversations. I just want to know, and I've asked the question before, but specifically for this year's results, how did the Park results correlate with the MAP tests that were given preceding the Park? Was there a correlation? Was there a strong correlation? What did it look like?
That's a great question. One of the features of the reporting system for MAP allows us to have a projected proficiency, which is correlated to our state exam, the Park. And what we found is it was pretty close. It was really accurate in math, some more discrepancies in reading. But what that does, after having looked at that now for one full year, is that it gives us a good ability to predict where our students may land and then intervene from now until the end of the year to try and push them past that projected proficiency.
Good evening. Our first slide here is on freshman on track. And I won't read the slide to you, but this is the way the state is calculating freshmen meeting their core requirements and trending towards a graduation rate. You can see our data. In 2014, we were surprised by, again, the state calculates this. So I don't know that we've done anything differently from 2014 to 2017. I think it's pretty complex to pull that information out of our system for the state. How classes are coded could impact that. We never really got a clear understanding of the calculation in 2014. We do believe the last three years, that data is more accurate, and we are glad we see a modest increase in 2017 with 66% of our students on track after the freshman year.
When I first saw 2014, I thought, that has to be a mistake.
Right, right. It was a mistake.
Yep.
Still below where we want to be and below the state average.
Mr. Rollins?
At the risk of jumping ahead, so you disaggregate for the high schools, and it turns out that the individual high schools have much higher graduation rates than our district average. I'm just curious, is the same thing true for freshman on track? Do we know?
It's a good question. We do not know. We can look into that. We are working on a way to calculate that metric internally. So I'd love to see the comparison of the state because there could be a discrepancy as well.
Good question.
So our adjusted cohort graduation rate is a complex form, well, not really complex, but a formula they use to track cohorts. So starting with the freshman year, they track those students all the way through the system. And at the end of four years, into five years, into six years, calculate a graduation rate based on that cohort of students. You can see, we've trended up slightly, still below the state average, not where we want to be. I will point out, in 2012, that was the first year the state took over the calculation. So if you ever go back and look at any historical data on our district or any neighboring districts, recognize that 2012 is when the state started calculating the rate, and you'll see differences between when the state did it and when districts did it on their own. In 2012, our district graduation rate was 62%. So we have seen some growth. As Mr. Rollins pointed out, there is a discrepancy between our schools' rates and what our overall district rate is. We're still kind of digging into the data on that. As you know, we have about a 15% mobility rate in our district. Anytime a student enters or withdraws our system, there's an opportunity for the coding to not be entered appropriately, and that can impact the raw data. Here's the trend rate at each high school. Auburn High School starts, and you can see that they have made, I would say, a significant increase from 2016 to 2017. increase from 2016 to 2017. East High, the yellow bar is the school district, is their rate. The green bar is the district rate, and the darker green bar is the state rate. Jefferson.
I have a question.
Yes.
I should know this, but are special ed students counted in that number? Are the students at Roosevelt, I mean, or alternative programs counted in that number? And should they be or not?
Yeah, so if you, if you were to log into Illinois School Report Card dot com-
Right.
-you can go to the graduation rate, and you can look at all the different groups of students. English language learners are included, special ed students. It's broken out by demographics, so they're all included in the rate.
So it is included, okay. Any other questions for Dr. Vosberg? Okay.
All right.
The numbers don't make sense to us. I think that, you know, I think the board would say that-
We are still digging in to get clarity on the numbers.
Yeah. How can all of our four major high schools that have the biggest numbers of students be growing and still not where we want them to be? I don't want anyone to feel that we're, you know, that we're where we want to be yet. But they're all growing and have gone, and yet there is a-
We're making progress at the building level, which should correlate to the district level progress.
Right.
And we're going to, we, I have a meeting scheduled with different people in the organization that have different perspectives on how data is entered into the system to get some clarity on it.
Mr. Connor has one more question.
One more thing, Mr. Vosberg, is I think, I wonder, are we, when we look at this, you know, is there anything we're correlating it against? I mean, you know, clearly, you've got MAP, and you've got money, and you've got programs and other things. Because when you see that graduation grow by each school, the question you've got to say is, gee, and I don't remember exactly, but it looked like there was an eight-point jump for Jefferson and, you know. So I think what immediately comes to my mind anytime I see a jump in stats is, well, why? So I assume there's some kind of correlation-
There's a lot of variables that you're looking at. Yeah, there's a lot of variables at play. First, I'd say what we are certain about is our attendance rate has increased two full percentage points from where it was six years ago. We've maintained that for about four years. We've, that's been validated by the state, because they have to pay us more money because of that, and so they've audited that number. And so we know that we have a higher percentage of kids coming to school, which obviously correlates to learning and academic achievement. We have less discipline issues in our schools. We have more stability amongst administrators.
I think-
We have, we have, we're in year five with high school academies.
Yep. I think my, my point would be, you've brought up some good points, which I would assume we're doing some analysis. I would think there's got to be some, if you will, summary page that looks at some of these, right? Because you could take the five schools and say, you know, here's when the, you know, attendance started, so on and so forth. I think, at least for me personally, you know, either, go ahead, give me the data, and I'll do it myself in an Excel spreadsheet.
It is, it is interesting to know that Jefferson has the biggest jump, and they're a year, a year ahead of everybody else with the academy implementation. That would be a great story if that's, but like I said, there's a lot of different variables. They also have the longest-tenured principal at the school. They also have what I would, what I've witnessed, they were the first school to do the late start and have print, have the PLCs meeting every week, as opposed to only twice a month. So there are, there are some things that have happened at Jefferson that would correlate to that result.
I would like to see some of that documented in such a way that it's obvious, either by the high school level and then some aggregate or something, because clearly, you all thought about this, and these are raw numbers, which are really good, but I think that would be helpful-
Yeah, we're going to spend more, we're spending more time to really dig into the data, and we want to build on what works.
Yeah, the one thing I will say is, and I've never pushed tools, but there are a number of visualization tools, you know, where you can have heat maps and all kinds of correlations. And all I would say is, you know, let those facts kind of speak for themselves. But I would say directly, I would prefer it not be verbal. I'd like it to be, somebody says, you know, here are our standard ten criteria, you know, length of the principal, being there, blah, blah, blah. Here are those ten factors. Here how it affected East and Auburn, et cetera. That's what I think would be very useful, right? Because then you would see, oh gee, these factors are different by school, and especially as we go forward in time, that would be a good benchmark.
Absolutely. Yep. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Did you have a question, Tim?
Well, just one of the little pieces of good news we had last year was that we had eliminated the achievement gap between Latinos and whites on the, on the graduation rate and almost eliminated it for African-Americans. Do we have, know what happened in 2017? I'm trying to look it up, but it's not very friendly for mobile.
So the Hispanic graduation rate, there was no gap. In fact, I think they had the highest graduation rate of all the groups. And African-American students trend upwards, but there's still a gap between African-American students and the other subgroups.
Did you have a question?
Sure.
So moving on to Goal Two for Engaging Partnerships, we are continuing to track our volunteer numbers. So I've included here just our trend data for that and our current year-to-date actual numbers of volunteers. I will preface this by saying, we are still trying to systematically bring those numbers to fruition. We're trying to track them at each school. We do have a system to track that. However, we are still doing some hand-tracking, so we're in the process of really stabilizing our system as a whole. But these numbers were as of yesterday, so actually, they're reflected different on the form that you have, because Marcia Sisney visited me yesterday for a very up-to-date numbers of volunteers, volunteer time, and the staff equivalency for these volunteers within our organization. So we're very excited for those numbers, and we really still believe we are on target for our 2020 of 100,000 volunteers, 10,000 volunteer time hours, and the staff equivalency of 50. So we're very excited about this metric. David, did you have a question?
Yeah, aside from reversing the number of hours and volunteers, thinking on 10,000 volunteers and 100,000.
I'm sorry.
Okay. How many of the volunteer hours are in the classroom? And how do those volunteer hours, and in the hope increase, correlate to student achievement?
I'll deflect to Earl.
Okay, thank you.
So that's a great question, Mr. Siegel. So we have not disaggregated necessarily, you know, what percentage of teachers or, I'm sorry, volunteers are working in the classroom versus doing other tasks. I think that's something that we've talked about, you know, how can we, you know, how do you track that? And we're still working with the schools, you know, making sure we identify the needs, and then working with them to see if they can really drill down on that number. So that's something that we're going to keep working with. And then the elusive, you know, what's the impact on student achievement? And that's still something that we have not been able to, with, you know, validly state that there is some type of impact on student achievement. Anecdotally, I think we can all talk about, you know, that there is some positive impact on our students, but we have not been able to necessarily quantify what that is.
Okay. Any other questions? Something else that we've committed to do is what we've been doing all along, but to be very conscientious about our attendance at high-profile events and the partnerships that we're creating within our organization and our external partners here in the community. So I just listed a couple of organizations of which we've connected with either through attendance at events or partnerships in networking, such as the partnership with the Rockford Park District that I mentioned earlier. So I just wanted to highlight some of those things that we continue to do, and we do track this and discuss this at Cabinet on a weekly basis. Again, I know that the facilities is definitely a commitment for us to ensure that we are increasing our facility work orders to really try to get them done within a week's period of time. I know that Ops has received several reports from Todd Schmidt and his team, but I just wanted to put this as a placeholder to let you know that we are still also looking at these metrics to ensure that we're providing a high level of customer service when it comes to facilities. I'm actually going to invite Heidi up to give a deeper dive on how we are looking at our technology work orders and how we're tracking that in our system.
So when we last met in September, I promised a deeper dive rather than just an average number of days to close tickets, because the work of IT and IS is much more nuanced than that. And so what made the most sense to IT, IS, and me was to look at a snapshot of time. So for this particular update, we're looking at August through October in FY17 and August through October in FY18. So you can see that there are, we had 1,000 more tickets in Level One support, and yet we decreased the number of days to close them by more than half. So in FY17, Level One support was 2,580 tickets. It took us 9.39 days on average to close them. In FY18, from the same time period, August through October, we had 3,507 tickets, and it took us 4.37 days on average to close them. So that's how you read the chart. We can look at specifically mobile device support. In FY17, there's an extraordinary delay there with 21 tickets and 40 days to close them. And then when you look in FY18, you can see that those have been, the number of days has gone down significantly. When I think about what was happening in our district at that point in time last year, we had two major initiatives rolling out at the start of school, on top of IT and IS's regularly-scheduled summer work and support for schools. And so that led to an extraordinary delay in service. We can also notice predictably with eSchool Plus, now that we've been through this, in FY17, 312 tickets with an average time to resolve of 1.22, and in FY18, that number tripled. And we know that our eSchool upgrade happened during this window as well, and so that is We can also then look into our current window, which goes up through October 29th, and many of our Business Plus tickets and eSchool tickets are now those lingering issues that we're working with eSchool to resolve, many of which have been updated to a critical status. What you see on the bottom part of the chart is the calls that are coming into the help desk. And what these numbers say in FY18 is, a lot of people needed a lot of help at the beginning of the school year, and many of them didn't have time to wait. And so they abandoned their call and called back. And we can also note, make sure I find this equipment, no. I wanted to go back. Oh, Support One with the 3,000 tickets and an additional 1,000 tickets compared to this time last year. Part of that was due to classrooms not being fully prepared and ready for IT to get everything set up. And so that was a result of that as well. Do you have any questions I can answer about these numbers? Otherwise, what you can expect in our next update is the next snapshot of FY17 compared to FY18. And what we'll do throughout the year then is use this data to set reasonable goals per time period throughout the year, because there is an incredible ebb and flow to the
Two things. One is, when I see large numbers, like on the Support One, immediately, I ask, are there some subcategories that make sense for the breakdown? So that would be one thing I'd look into, to say, you know, anytime you hit a certain threshold, there's got to be some categories of things you're doing.
Sure.
And I think that would be good to see.
Sure.
The other thing, I will say a similar comment as I gave to Mr. Vosberg is, I would look, I mean, this is good, so I'm not saying, don't do this, but I think if there are certain factors, and let's talk about money, or let's talk about, right, or staffing, or, you know, big events like the eSchool problems, I think some kind of context, you know, would really be helpful that it is apparent. And the two things, I would say, staffing and dollars are probably at least proxies for some of the information, because a lot of places, especially around help desk and all that, they do, you know, sort of per capita, you know, dollars per, you know, hour spent or, you know, per fix or whatever, because some things might cost more, and, you know, that would be helpful. I, like, I suspect eSchool probably is more intense than just some of the simple equipment and some of those things.
It is.
Yeah. So all I'm saying is, you know, that's one thing that we're looking at, and I think would make sense here. And again, not on this chart. Again, this one's good, but-
You wouldn't like me to add a few more rows and columns?
I would say at least somewhere else.
Okay, sure.
At least to say, here are some of the factors we're looking at, because that would help.
Another thing we're tracking in response, again, to our engagement survey, but something that we had been already tracking is rounding in Living the Vision. So at this point in time, we've just provided a snapshot of where we are. Our first team in rounding, both from Dr. Jarrett and Cabinet, would be our direct teams. So for example, it's my, you know, continuous improvement team, how many times I meet with my direct supervisor, or by the individuals that I directly supervise. And then organization and school visits are other people that we connect with outside of our direct department. So we just wanted to give you a snapshot of our tracking mechanisms in those areas. And as of right now, the number of Living the Vision and shout-out recognitions year-to-date is 28. And again, as I said in our action plan, we want to extend that, not just in number, but in audience, to really spread that out and get the recognition throughout our entire One of the things that we're looking at in reflection to optimal climate as well is certified staff attendance. So we're just looking at snapshots right now to see if there's a correlation between staff attendance and optimal climate. So we just wanted to just provide a snapshot to let you know that this is another correlation that we're looking at, just to have a better idea of how our schools are doing and whether our students are continuously, you know, having their particular teacher in front of them on a regular basis. Yep, yes.
On this one, I think, this, so do I assume this is a number that's going to be ongoing?
Correct.
I would say, do we have it A by school and B sort of tipped on its access so we can do some other correlations yet again, or time periods or something?
Yep.
Because that, I think, is another that-
Sure.
Really, on a time-period basis, that's, this is a number I think we really need to look at pretty carefully.
And I'll defer to Matt Vosberg. One of the things that the schools are doing is looking at this information within their own, you know, professional goals and looking at the percentage of sub-rate per building. So I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
There'll be more information on a board update, probably in a week or two, but we are tracking this on a weekly basis, our sub-fill rate. We were at 70% last year, and right now, we're at 84%. If that puts any context to the work that's being done. So we are seeing an improvement, and we are seeing an overall improvement in teacher attendance as well, with about a 2% to 3% improvement in teacher attendance year-over-date, based on the months. So comparing September of 2016 to 17, October.
Yeah, again, this is fine. I would just say, same thing. Make sure you organize it, have those kinds of comparisons. I think, because raw numbers are good on something like this, on an as-of. Most stats are typically on some kind of monthly cycle. I mean, that's really pretty typical. So that's, and then especially comparative. I mean, and the other thing is, you know, when you get more granular on some of that, now you can see by school, holiday and Monday, or Friday and Monday absences, I mean, there's all kinds of things that, that do come out. So I would really, again, comparatives by time period as well as, you know, general categories, you know, high school, middle, and elementary, and then by the schools. That would be.
Thank you. In addition, we're working on a professional development curriculum, and I just provided the rationale and the five domains by which we're really looking at through our lens. This is really the scope of the work that right now falls on our talent development team, to ensure that we are truly providing a holistic, systematic approach to professional development that is meaningful for our staff, but also provides succession opportunities for individuals in our organization to develop their leadership skills and capacity. So we'll be providing progress on this over the next three years, actually. This is a three-year tiered program. Also, in response to fiscal responsibility, to be fiscally in our operational stewardship Goal Five, one of the things that we wanted to do was to ensure that each of us in our teams here at the district office, the cabinet-level teams, received adequate and comprehensive training on best practice budgeting strategies. And so Nikki and her team have been working with us. As of now, 19 individuals in six district office departments have participated in this training to really, again, provide a comprehensive systematic view in support- a comprehensive systematic view in support on how to do budgeting here in RPS 205. So again, we're speaking the same language and utilizing the same systems for budgeting. That's all we have at this point for our 90-day strategic update. And we are right on time as far as, oh, but we have one, I don't, I actually do remember. So to close out, this was just our snapshot of the 90 days, but I do know that Tim had asked for sort of a follow-up on some planning in response to Goal One, I believe. So I'll invite Heidi back up. Is that what you were nodding at? Is it? Okay. So I'm going to invite Heidi back up again to, after looking at the data, provide a scope of our plan for moving forward. And then I'll come back up just to close out if there's any general questions on our process.
So I'll refer back to a few things that you have been provided with through the board update, and then I can expand on them if you'd like. So the question really is, why are our students declining both in national percentile for growth and also in proficiency as measured by the park exam? Is that correct? Okay. At this point in time, we can't necessarily point to a single thing. What we can do is take a comprehensive look at our systems and structures as they relate to teaching and learning and identify some real pain points, both historically and most recently, as we now have the new tool of the MAP assessment to provide that national percentile data. And here's what we've noticed. We've known since the CEC came in and did their assessment of our curriculum system that we did not have a guaranteed and viable curriculum that was vertically, horizontally, and diagonally aligned to ensure a consistent experience for students and to push them toward more rigorous instruction. And so that led to our five-year strategic plan to redesign curriculum collaboratively with the REA to ensure collective ownership of the curriculum and also ensure that consistent experience for students. And so we're in year three of that. That takes time. It is not finished yet, but that is our steady, to borrow the metaphor, 20-mile march toward an aligned system, and that is ongoing. Throughout that work, we identified a key pain point being in foundational literacy or early literacy skills. And what we know is that when students are reading on grade level by third grade, they have significantly improved outcomes later on in their high school and experience and in life in general. And so we have then really put our weight behind Reading Horizons as a consistent instructional approach and not just a resource for consistent instruction in phonological awareness and phonics across the district. We are in year one of full implementation of that. We're monitoring two things. We're monitoring implementation. We're looking for four key data points as Reading Horizons implementation coaches come in and work with every single one of our teachers twice this year. We are also then looking at a few different metrics within Reading Horizons itself so that we can look for student growth as well. When I presented that program to you through Ed Committee last year, I said that we were going to look at three things. One was system improvement, which I've already spoken to. We monitor that on an annual basis using an audit tool that was based off of that initial CEC assessment. Secondly, teacher growth monitored through implementation, and then finally, student growth. I'm hopeful that we're going to see growth yet this year, but I also know that research says when we make a big change, we experience an implementation dip, and so we are prepared for that as well. Secondly, in terms of curriculum work, we know that what's essential for students to not only reach their achievement levels but also continue to grow is that they need to be pushed. Every single child needs to be pushed. They need rigorous grade-level instruction. They need rigorous goals, and they need support in goal setting. And so we're really approaching that from two different angles. One is through the process of school improvement and working with principals and with teachers on short-cycle goal setting. As humans, we are really good at setting very short goals and seeing wins early to be motivated to continue to work toward them. When we wait until the very end and the park results come out, it really is hard to stay focused and stay on track. And so that's one strategy that's drilling down into the classroom. The second thing that we are doing as it relates to instruction and ensuring a rigorous experience for all students, and you'll learn more about this November 21st at Ed Committee, is really resequencing the way that we teach math and science in high school. And I think that will make an improvement as well. Finally, we are, we have added instructional coaches to all of our elementary schools. And what we've done is a change. We used to have reading specialists that we really lived in each building, and the principal really determined how that person was used and trained to support teachers. We've centralized that, and we've ensured that about 15 percent of their time each week is spent here, learning about the district's priorities, being trained in them so that they can support them in the classroom. So this year, that means being a huge support for Reading Horizons as teachers are navigating their way through a new program and a new instructional method. It also means supporting our grade-level math curriculum map. And so we've identified that that is an area that needs some intervention, and we're addressing that now through a cross-department approach to bring the focus on grade-level standards and using our math, I'm sorry, our MAP learning continuum to help teachers really make solid decisions in instruction. That was a very long response. Is there anything that I left out that you were hoping for more detail on?
No, I mean, that's pretty much what I was looking for. I guess what I was really thinking is I wish there was some way, and I'm not sure there is, to distill that to less than 600 words and get it across to the community as far as what we're doing. I mean, we are having this conversation at a meeting where there's nobody here, there's no reporter here, there's no-
Mary can handle that, can't you, Mary?
There's no media here.
So I can, I can give you three things. I can boil it down. I do love a long, complex sentence, though. But I will, I will try very hard. I will try very hard. Three things. Number one, short-cycle goal setting toward growth with less of an emphasis on proficiency and more on movement. Number two, grade-level instruction that is rigorous for every single student. And number three, allowing our system to mature so that every student has a rigorous grade-level course of study, pre-K through 12.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Munson, you want to wrap it up?
Mary, did you get all that down?
Okay.
Actually, that concludes our presentation. But if you have any questions about our 90-day update, if you have any questions in regards to anything that you saw here, or you want us to extrapolate moving forward on our 90-day updates, please let us know. Again, I'll be here until and throughout and after the board meeting if you have further questions. But thank you again for coming early today and for listening to our update.
Thank you all very much. I need a motion and a second for us to adjourn our closed session and, to adjourn to go to closed session.
So moved.
All right, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have to do a roll? No?
All aye.
We're all ayes. So a quick bathroom break if you need it.